Good evening. This evening is February twentieth and it is five thirty P M. And we are going to be looking for a city update. We'll start out with the city update and Ms. Marissa Pacheco, she's our interim Chief of Staff and so she's, it looks like she's going to be giving us the city update tonight.
I can't, I can, but it's going to be short, Madam Chair and Council. I'm going to turn it over to President Aliff on a couple of issues that I was going to speak about, but he has some more information on. But the only thing that I'm bringing from the mayor's office this evening is just a reminder that City Council will be hosting a special council meeting on Thursday, February twenty second at five thirty P M. It will be televised down public.
Okay.
With that, I'll turn it over to President Aliff.
Thank you, Ms. Pacheco. There's three issues that really need to be addressed through the mayor's office, through the Chief of Staff and us, the City Council. And the first one is the office space. So communication has gone out to each and every counselor. Only one counselor has has emailed back saying whether they prefer the Pope Block Building or the B T C. And we need to set up bare minimum, I think, our appointments to look at both locations. So you guys can make a good decision on where you want your office. Both offices are owned by the city. There is no no additional lease payments or anything else like that. But they're going to send you an email tomorrow on which day, which days we can do the walkthrough on both locations. So try your best to respond to that. The second issue is the bills that were brought to us by the by our lobbyists last week and an email was sent out to see who wanted to move forward. Counselor Flores was the only one that responded to that. So we need to have, if you want, if you want to be involved in those bills, then we need to respond to that. So one of the problems, and maybe we can ask Mr. Romero tonight, is now we've missed the deadline for the resolutions for the twenty sixth. So if any of these bills that we plan on on voicing our support or not support for that are coming up, we need to send a letter under a city letterhead and probably under individual counselors' names, or if a group of counselors want to be named on the support of any of those bills, we need to make that happen. And the third thing, and then we'll open it up to any discussion or anything on that, is the in two thousand and twenty, we sent out an R F P for a for a counsel attorney. I made sure that everybody got emailed what that that request looked like, what the description of the duties of the the counsel attorney look like. And we asked if anybody has any questions, if there's going to be if you want any clarification on anything and have not heard anything. So the question on that, I guess, needs to be, do we need to have a work session on that on that request? Because for some reason, counselors just don't want to respond to the emails that the Chief of Staff and the mayor's office are sending out asking for information. So I would ask that we somehow get that on the agenda for a work session so we can move forward with that. And we also need to talk about the administrative assistant and getting that dialed in. So those are the three issues that we wanted to talk about. And I'll turn it back over to Chairman Mastry and then she, you guys can ask questions.
Okay, um, well, I'm just sending mine off now. It looks like it was it looks like it was sitting in my drafts for the bills. I did send a response for the for the the office space too. I said either or. And so I did send that off. And then I have also a couple of things that I also need to get taken care of so that we can get it done by resolution too. And that is the education through Action Colorado, the classes. Those are coming up by the end of March. And so I just need to know which counselor would like to attend the class, the seven month class, leadership class or through Action Colorado.
Where's that located?
It's going to be here located at their, at the Colorado building. I don't know where they hold the class, but it will be here in Pueblo. I know that I would like to attend. And so they came and they presented to us at our council retreat. And then also they were also going to do a workshop on our Home Rule City. And I was wondering if the counselors would be able to do that on March sixteenth. It would be a Saturday, but that's for us to attend for the mayor, if she'd like to attend, anyone on her staff, anyone on staff that would like to attend. They're coming in to teach us about Home Rule City.
What's the date?
March sixteenth, Saturday, March sixteenth. I don't know. I'm expecting a four hour minimum. You're available? How about the rest of you? Saturday, March sixteenth? Are you available, President Aliff?
I'll have to look. I can't tell you. I'll stop.
Okay, if you could kind of get that into an email to me tomorrow and then that way we can get that resolution prepared. Do you think that Mayor Graham, do you think you'll be able to set that up with your staff to see if they're available on March sixteenth?
Yeah, well, I don't think you need a resolution for that. I think that's just something.
Well, we have to pay for it.
You have a council budget that I think can come out of it, but I'll check tomorrow with Tracy and let you know. But I don't think you have to set a resolution. It's just like a class if council or when we attend C M L, I think it can just come out of.
Yeah, if we do it out of that.
Out of your budget. And then are you wanting to have it here, Counselor Mastry and Counselor?
Yeah, probably would be the best place. I'll make sure with, I'll get the details with Sarah.
Okay.
Tomorrow. And then also, I mean, we should probably split the costs, right, between your budget and our budget, since both both your staff and us are attending.
Okay.
Okay?
And then if you'll just send a time?
I'll get all the details.
Okay.
If sixteen, the sixteenth looks good so far.
I'll, I'll attend, but I, but I have a question as relates to this office space.
Okay, what's your question?
Question is, have we given any thought to any space in this building? Because I've seen, I've looked through the building and I see some things that could be done. I mean, it's going to take some work as it relates to us doing that. One of them is the city attorney moving to that space and us being right, right in the, in the, in the area where the mayor is because that's basically where most government agencies work.
Yeah, that is the future. That is the future plan for the administration. They're making that plan, but that plan has to be executed. It has to be purchase of a new place. It has to be all the departments moving. So this is a temporary plan so that we can, you would have a office space at this time. Okay, so that the, the, the plan is in the future. We can accommodate counsel here, but we have to make room for that to happen.
Good. We need to come into the twenty first century. Yeah, thank.
All right, thank you. All right, anything else, Counselor?
Comments. I just wanted to follow up on Counselor Aliff's discussion on these items. First of all, I'm not sure when you guys say office space, what you guys are actually talking about. I, this is my seventh year and I've never needed office space the whole time I've been on City Council. Normally I meet with people for coffee. If I need a quiet place and a private place, I use the mayor's boardroom and try to fit it into their calendar. But assuming that's what the majority wants to do, the question is, are we looking for just a space that we could go in and out of? Are we talking about seven different offices here? I'm not clear which, yeah.
Okay, we did find out when, and we've had several meetings where we've said, I mean, I won't use an office. I don't think you or Sarah want an office, but, but Counselor Latino and Counselor Gomez, and I believe Counselor Mastry at times would like to have office space. So what we came up with is in the Pope Block Building, you can have an individual office. Okay, in the B T C, it's an open boardroom where they would put cubicles in. Okay, we're not looking for seven offices. We're literally looking for two or three. The problem with the B T C would be is if three counselors were in there, you'd have to have a meeting. You can't, you can't have three counselors in there at the same time. But if three counselors are not going to use it, then it would be fine. So that's what we're trying to get, you know, clear direction on. The B T C has, has, it's a fantastic space with plenty of room for two or three cubicles. And then it has a big board table where you could have meetings. And it's, it's I think one of the advantages of the B T C is there's always action down there. There's people, there's things going on. If you go to the Pope Block Building, I was telling some people earlier, it feels like you're in the movie The Shining. It's so empty and nothing going on. But maybe that's good for everybody. That's why I'm suggesting we at least the people who are interested to, to our both buildings and then decide which one. It's okay. Sure, whichever one.
My, my, my third question had to do with this R F P for an attorney. I, I did respond to two of the three that you had sent out. I didn't respond on that because I got an impression from the email that that had already been decided somewhere down the line. It's, it sounded, it sounded like it was the final thing we were going to do and not have a chance to discuss it. Because this isn't the first time we've tried this. This will be number three. And there's, I want to have a discussion about this with all of us because I'm still not convinced that we need a separate attorney. And we just, we just need to discuss it. And I think a work session would be, would be fine.
Yeah, and I think that with the Chairman Mastry, we decide, are you good with having a work session on that?
We do have some, it's, you know, I'm not going to be here on March fourth, so, but I'd, so I'd like to be present for it. So my next opening is March eleventh.
Fine with me.
Okay.
And then I think I had, I had one other, and that's the I, I want clarity, I guess, on, you know, we, we, a lot, I think, a hundred thousand dollars for council expenses. Is that, is that about right?
I think it's more than that for your, for your budget, because the
Budget for.
The auditor comes out of your budget. We can provide that number for you. The hundred thousand is council contingency. So
That, that's what I meant.
I actually asked our Director of Finance if we could maybe even have like an educational thing for council about this is contingency, this is your operating budget. And then this is your travel budget, just so you guys know how much money you have in each. And so that the funds that you're asking for are coming out of the.
Because the example, example of Counselor Mastry going to this educational class, that should come out of our general expense account and not our.
Not your contingencies.
And just like we do with mileage, if we go to Denver or whatever.
Can, can I, Counselor Mastry, can you just do a quick poll of who would want to do the education for Colorado? Because you do have to have a resume and a letter submitted by March fourteenth for the individuals who want to, to be in it. So if that's something we need to work on with you, with you too. So if you're wanting to go, we can, we can help with that.
Yeah, I, I do plan on going. I don't know if anyone else here plans on going to. You're a no?
I'm sure I can't because of the day.
No?
You said yes.
Yes or no? Okay.
Yeah, so this is the, this is the one that's the seven month commitment. It's five thousand dollars a person. So it's over.
I'm going to take it.
It's over a amount of time. This isn't the sixteenth. Okay, so Joe, yeah, Counselor Latino?
It's a commitment, seven month commitment, a Thursday and a Friday.
No, okay. President Aliff?
No, I can't.
Okay. President Gomez, no?
I was planning on doing that.
Counselor Flores, okay. Counselor Martinez, I see you're on. Is that something you'd be interested in?
Hi, I'm here. I'm a no. Okay.
Great, well, we can help.
Is it going to be too late for the new council member to be?
No, you have till March fourteenth. So we can follow up with the new counselor.
Okay, and then I have something for you, Mayor. I got a call from a constituent today. They run the youth soccer team program on the west side. That is, they practice at Ursula Cruz Park, which is, they're telling me is a city owned property. And that they've been going through all the different departments and everything. They can't have practice on the field because they've had like three injuries from last year from all the, it's just not, it's very poorly maintained. It's, it's close to the school. So the members, the soccer members can go from the school to there. They suggested another park, but the other park has a lot of criminal activity. And so it's not safe. And they're, you know, they're an active program, an affordable program for the locals, and they just need to have some maintenance done. And they keep telling them, no, they don't have the money for it. They need to go to another park. They need to utilize, utilize another park. And it's just not working out. And it's been a she could come here and speak about their program. It's a very successful program. I'm keeping, I mean, that's what we're about, right? Trying to keep kids off the streets, trying to get them out of trouble, keep them out of trouble and give them something to look forward to.
Okay.
So it's something that, you know, we need to get straightened out.
Can you send her contact over and we'll give her a call tomorrow?
Mm hmm. Yeah, because she said she tried to reach out to the hundred days.
Oh.
And it was already full.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
I have a question. I'm sorry. Has anybody talked to the Runyon Sports Complex of the county about that? Because that, having been the general manager there, they can play soccer there. And it's going to take very little to do because they can use the outfield. Okay, if we're talking about safety and security and we got those kinds of problems, that's the place to be.
Thank you, Counselor.
Yeah, they are looking for something close to the school because they walk from the school to the park where they practice. If we, I mean, we have parks in this community. If they need to be maintained, especially to support kids' activities and kids' programs, we just need to take a serious look at that as, as to why it's not and get it, get it done.
Doesn't, excuse me, I'm sorry, Dennis.
No, go ahead.
Doesn't, we, we have, we have park security. So I mean, going to Mineral Palace and they could do it there too, because there's plenty of space or the city park, they can do it there. If they can't do it in other places and those, those parks are both close north, south.
They can't walk from the west side all the way over to those parks. So it, we, it, we have a city asset within blocks of the school.
Well, there's Langone Field too.
You know, we have city at, no, because that is on twenty fourth and that's only saved for games. It's, there's no practices that are allowed to be held there according to what they're telling me. But I think it's just something that we need to look into. And, you know, soccer season is upon us. So.
I'm sorry, that doesn't make sense. They can't place, practice and play games there. That, that I've got an athletic background. That doesn't make sense.
Well, that's why we need to, the mayor's going to get with her department and make sure that something happens so that the kids can be accommodated. Yes?
I just wanted clarity here because I know that Ursula Park is part of the charter school. I'm not sure that we have any jurisdiction over that park.
That's what I was, yeah, I was going to clarify that it is, just like the.
The other thing is, the main part there is Wild Horse Creek Park, which is near, near the I'm trying to think, picture where it's at, but it's off of seventeenth to the south. And it's right before you go over Wild Horse. There's a big park there. And maybe that's the area that they're saying.
Yeah, that's why I'm giving her the phone number and she can talk to them directly and we could get the conversation started. That's what's important because soccer season is upon us.
And to remind us too.
We have the Sun Belt this weekend, don't we? Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll follow on tomorrow if you send that contact.
Okay.
And just to remind people, we don't have jurisdiction over Runyon Field. That's the county that has their own board, has their own jurisdiction over it. Although I think they work closely with the city somehow, and maybe Joe knows.
Yeah, they do work closely with the city. They'll help any way they can.
All right, great. Anyone else? Any final thing? Okay, let's move on. And Mr. Romero, welcome to Tuesday, the twentieth. How are you this evening?
We are doing great. We've had a busy day at the Capitol. It's been, we represent the Colorado Nurses Association. It was their day at the Capitol and, but we're we're looking forward to, to talking to you about some bills of interest. And thank you, Madam Chair, for, for the time. We'll try to move through this pretty quickly. President Aliff, Mayor Graham and members of City Council. Just a couple of process things for us. We've been asked by Everas to start participating in these eight o'clock Pueblo local leaders legislative briefings. The purpose that they've asked, and of course, we want permission from City Council and the mayor to do this is there are a number of air bills, air quality bills that are, that are are being stakeholder, they're doing stakeholder on those bills, but they will be introduced probably in the next couple of weeks. A number of those bills have a direct impact, obviously, on the city and have a direct impact on, on Everas. And so they thought it would be helpful if we were able to attend those, those eight o'clock meetings. So with your permission, there's one tomorrow and we would participate in that if, if, if you deem it appropriate. The other thing in terms of process is that tomorrow you will get some different trackers, bill trackers. We've we think it's important, you know, one, you get a lot of information. You know, besides just the information we provide you, but we thought what would be helpful for you is we would sort of break out some trackers. I know that Counselor Martinez has, has asked some questions around childcare. We thought we, there are a number of sort of child welfare, childcare of bills that have now been introduced. And so we'll probably, we'd like to do a bill tracker for that. Another question that we've received is that our Southern Colorado delegation, they're carrying a number of significant bills. So we thought we'd create one for just the legislators that represent Pueblo County so that you can see the bills that they, they're interested in. The other, the other piece that I think that it, I mean, it, it maybe doesn't directly impact the city, but I think you're going to get a ton of questions on are the four gun bills that have been introduced in the legislature. There's the Senate Bill one thirty one, which prohibits carrying a firearm in sensitive spaces that includes, you know, public facilities, playgrounds. And I think you're going to get a number of questions from your constituents on that bill. There's the concealed carry training bill that requires more training if you're going to carry a concealed weapon. There's the banning of, of weapons that are involved in mass shootings. And then the, the one that we've been getting questions from just as your lobbyists is there's a, a bill that would require liability insurance for any firearm in the home. And that means you would have to get another policy, not your homeowner's policy that would cover the guns that you have in your home. So we will, we will create a, a bill tracker for those four bills so that you can take a look at them. If you get questions from your constituents and you're, you're able to, to look at those and readily answer their questions. And so, you know, that's, and those, the, and if, and if there's another area that you'd like us to focus on, like criminal justice, we can certainly create a, a bill tracker for that. The one thing that I wanted to put on your, your radar for your city, city attorney to look at and get back to us and, and just to back up just a little bit to President Aliff's question, you know, comment about getting some sort of record made on bills that you want to endorse, whether you want to support, oppose, amend or monitor the bills. You know, we had recommended some sort of, you know, protocol, like the resolution, but as long as we have some documentation that you've taken a vote on it, it's mainly to protect you and, and for us to report accurate, accurate information to the Secretary of State that we have a record of that. So if you want to do it by letter and you all sign it, just as long as that's reflected in something that we can, you know, we can use when we, when we register with Secretary of State. One that we wanted to put on your radar, and then I'm going to turn it over to Alec to talk to you about two other bills. And then we'll obviously want to answer questions for you. It's Senate, it's House Bill twelve forty one. It's the alignment of petty property crime threshold. There are a number of bills that are looking at, you know, how bond impacts people, obviously, that you know, can't afford a bond and, and are placed in jail. This currently, there's a specific dollar amount of fifty dollars for petty property crimes where courts cannot impose monetary bonds for pretrial release. The bill removes the fifty dollar limit, limit and focuses on the classification of offenses under state law to determine pretrial release conditions. If you could have your city attorney look at that one and, and or your municipal judge to, to, to determine impact on and, and whether or not the the city would like to take a position on that. And now I'm going to turn it over to Alec just to talk about two more bills. Thank you.
Good evening to the mayor and members of council and staff. So I'm going to briefly talk about two different bills here. The first bill is House Bill twenty four thirteen oh four. It's minimum parking requirements. So in short, this bill prohibits municipalities from enforcing minimum parking requirements for real properties starting January first of two thousand and twenty five. Municipalities cannot impose requirements on motor, motor vehicle parking spaces provided voluntarily in connection with development projects after January first, two thousand and twenty five, such as the option for owners to charge for parking and to accommodate vehicle charging stations per existing law. The bill also has a provision in there that would mandate that municipalities subject to these provisions, submit compliance reports to D O L A by June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty five with a designated review process in place. This bill has not been calendared yet. The sponsors are Rep. Bee Hill, Rep. Woodrow, Senator Priola and Senator Henrickson. Just some people that are in support. Colorado Association of Home Builders are in support and C M L is in the opposed position on this bill. The next bill is House Bill twenty four twelve thirty nine. This is sponsored by Rep. Valdez and Senator Priola. Some lobbyists on this bill or C M L is in the opposed position on this bill as well. The Colorado State Fire Chiefs are opposed and the Colorado Association of Home Builders are in support. So this bill primarily focuses on building code requirements for municipalities. By December first of two thousand and twenty six, municipal governing bodies must adopt or amend building codes to permit up to five stories of a multifamily residential building to be served by a single exit. Municipalities can adopt or adapt existing building code language, allowing a single exit for up to five stories of a group R two occupancy. The D O L A is going to be offering technical assistance upon request on this bill. But importantly, another provi- Uh, but importantly, another provision in the bill, it clarifies that adopting amending or amending building codes for this purpose doesn't count toward adopting or enforcing energy codes. Uh, and so this bill has not, oh, this bill is calendared and it's calendared for March nineteenth and it will be heard in the Transportation, Housing and Local Government Committee. And with that, we would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
Mr. Counselor Flores?
Yeah, uh, we, I'd went to the legislative breakfast a couple of Saturdays ago and, uh, Trish Morrow had entered a, uh, HB twenty-four ten twelve, which was uh, connected to the front range passenger rail, uh, deal. I don't think it's a controversial bill. It's just kind of cleaning up uh, wording and that type of stuff, but, uh, do you guys have any opinion as to where that's at at this point?
The, uh, has it?
It passed out of its first.
Sorry, it passed out of its first committee. Uh, it really is more of a, a technical bill. It establishes as a board, establishes a board uh, and really does more regulatory, but it's an important piece of, of front range, uh, uh, rail and as, as, as they both, both, uh, Senator Hendrickson and Representative Morrow said at that legislative breakfast, it's coming. Uh, there is going to be rail. And so they're trying to do all the foundational pieces to do that. I think, I don't know if that was on one of the bills that we had recommended that you support. Uh, but we, that it's a good, you know, again, it's a process bill, but it's an important process bill.
Uh, I, do you think, uh, we need to send a letter or any, um, anything at this stage or is it still too early of?
No, no, this would be a perfect time. It's out of the first committee and, and obviously before it gets to the full debate in the House. Uh, I think Representative Morrow would love to have the, the support of the city on that one. And I might add that, you know, one of the things we discussed with, uh, with the Kenny group who represents Everest is that uh, obviously this year with the number of the air quality bills, they're hoping that they can broaden uh, the scope of people that might be interested in testifying, uh, on these bills, including the mayor, but also city council. And we're happy to, to help in that process. And obviously you don't have to drive to Denver, you know? You know, one of the few thing, good things out of COVID is that they've really developed that the virtual uh, testimony and Zoom, obviously, you know, we, we use it. Uh, but they, they hope that they can broaden the number of people that, that, that would testify depending on, you know, the bills we see come out, so.
On, on that subject, um, and it may have been you Gil that gave us this information that Colorado is bragging about the reduction in carbon. Uh, and it's a talking point, you know, for everyone, uh, up at the Capitol, including the governor. And that Pueblo represented thirty-eight percent of that carbon reduction. And here they are picking on our steel plant again and indicating uh, that they want to make stricter, um, environmental laws uh, that could harm Everest. And so, so we need to be diligent on that. And I didn't quite understand the, the role that you're going to play in these, um, these meetings here, uh, with Alvarez.
So th- this will be our first meeting that we would attend, uh, Council Flores. So we're, we're, we're hoping to gain a little bit broader perspective of the Pueblo community, as I understand it and talking to the Kenny group is that Petco is involved in those, uh, uh, those conversations and that called the mayor is involved. Uh, they invite, uh, members of the county commissioner. So it would really just, and so it'd really be, uh, you know, just, you know, broadening the discussion so, so that we, as I said, I think, you know, depending on, and we're going to see a pretty significant number of bills that are going to be introduced. It's not going to be just one bill this year. There, there will be a number of bills that will impact, uh, the Pueblo community. And, and again, you'll have to balance uh, you know, you know, obviously as the city council, the environmental issues along with what, how it impacts industry and, and, and Pueblo. But I think that's, that would be the purpose for us to, to listen in on those calls, uh, to, to get that perspective.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Um, Mr. Romero, I attended the CML workshop this last week, um, which was very informative. It just added on to what you all are doing for us. And so that was a really nice, good experience. Um, my concern was, and I voiced it at the end of, of the session again, is comes to, um, taking away our ability to be a homeworld city by, with a lot of these bills. And so, um, it helped me to make decisions on some of the responses that we're giving you. Uh, so I, to put the two together was really a good experience. Um, and and I think, uh, what I was thankful for was to be able to understand it more because not every municipality has a lobbyist. And so you're getting it from both angles, you know? Uh, the other thing too, and this is, um, no, well, I just need to let counsel know because you know, we are looking at an attorney. And, um, our budget, the lobbyist money is also being paid out of our attorney budget from what I understand when we, it was not from the hundred thousand we had from the attorney. It was a separate budget. Okay, just to make sure. All right. Because, um, I know that when we signed our contract with you, it was a bunch of different, it was a bunch of different options and so forth that we could, um, choose from. Um, and it could be a possibility of a total amount is the way I understood that. It was kind of like an à la carte. So we just want to make sure that before we start building on, you know, additional, um, trackers and so forth. We want to just probably try to keep it to as much, as close to city business as possible. Um, and because a tracker is going to cost us, it's time, it's your time, right?
No, uh, it actually, uh, uh, Madam Chair, the, the, the trackers are, uh, really a function of the, the software that we use, which is Capital Watch and it, 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 it's not an additional cost.
Okay.
It is actually, you know, we, it's, it's, it really, it, it helps informs you that it, 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 it actually allows you to focus a little bit on maybe an, an area of interest that you might have. And that's why I said, you might just say, hey, listen, can you create a tracker for us on just the bills that potentially cities could get awarded grants for, uh, criminal justice? So, no, uh, th- this is part of the scope of work we do for you. So the trackers that we've identified, including the gun bills, that, that's part of the, the, the service we provide, Madam Chair.
Great. Thank you for the clarification. Anything else from you, um, or Alec tonight?
Uh, no, thank you for the time, Madam Chair.
I have a question. Don't forget about me. I, I'm on Zoom, Council Maestri.
Okay, Sarah.
Hey, no, it's Sarah. Um, hey, two questions. One, I, I'm also a bit confused with Counselor Flores's question about the, um, how, you know, the Everest discussions. Can you, do, do you have any examples on the bills that they would be proposing or talks or like what, what's on the table even?
So one of the stakeholder, uh, uh, meetings that we attended on Friday really had to do with air permitting, stricter air permitting, uh, and that definitely would impact, uh, Everest. Uh, and as, as I said, until we see a draft of a bill, you know, we haven't actually, uh, you know, the, the, the call we were on, on Friday was really more, they had talking points, but as soon as we get drafts of these bills, uh, we will get them to, uh, Counsel Martinez. But, but that's one example, uh, you know, or meeting certain goals that the governor has in terms of of carbon emissions and those kinds of things. And some of these will have more impact on industry, not just Everest, but other, uh, you know, uh, uh, forms of commerce in, 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 uh, in, uh, Pueblo, including, you know, cars. Uh, so, uh, those are the, those are the, you know, those are the bills we're hearing about. And that's why, uh, you know, I'm hopeful that, you know, on these calls at eight o'clock, we'll get a little bit more clarification on impact of Pueblo as, as the bills are introduced.
Yeah, that, that helps me. I guess, you know, it, it's such a, there's so many things that could, I guess, impact it. Are those going to look like weekly or daily calls or what's the frequency?
So I, I, that's a good question since this will be our first one that we're going to be on with your permission. I, I thought, you know, and the mayor might know, uh, I thought they were weekly calls, but we can check.
Okay. Well, I'd like for you to have, I guess, an ear there. Um, and keep us updated. That's just my opinion. Um, and then can you remind me, Gil, of the bill number for Representative Winters', um, tax sales, uh, state sales tax exemption for?
Yes, it's, it's House Bill ten thirty-two. It got out of committee by one vote. Uh,
Woo.
And, yeah, and, uh, and we were, we, we, you know, we, uh, we were, we were surprised because it has a significant, uh, uh, you know, it, it takes some money out of the.
Fiscal note, yeah.
Yeah, the fiscal note, but he's going to kind of pare it down a little bit, but it may be more based on need, but it got out of committee and he says he's been talking to leadership at, uh, uh, oh, sorry, it's, uh, House Bill ten twenty-seven. House Bill twenty-two, yeah.
Can you send us that updated, um, the amended draft after?
It will do, and it's sitting in appropriations right now. So as soon as we get a more, and, and if he offers an amendment, we'll get that amendment to you that will uh, lower, reduce the, the fiscal note.
Okay, thanks, Gil.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Martinez.
All right. Well, thank you.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Okay, so next we have, we're going to talk about the EPA Superfund site. We're going to get an update from Beth. Beth, if you'd like to approach.
I'm, I'm bringing up the rest of my team just for introductions and then they'll go back and sit down. So my name is Beth Archer. I am the Community Involvement Coordinator for the site, um.
Sabrina. Hi, Sabrina Forrest. Thank you very much for having us again. Um, and I've been the lead remedial project manager on the characterization and cleanup since twenty fourteen. Um, I'm going to be stepping back a little bit from my leadership role, handing more off to Sydney here. Um, I'm still going to be involved with Colorado Smelter Project, but we'll be giving a little bit of an update on some recent lead guidance changes. And so I'll be helping to implement those across all of our sites in our region. But thank you again for having us.
Thank you.
Hi, uh, my name is Honor Morgan. I'm the backup CIC Community Involvement Coordinator to Beth.
And hi, I'm Sydney Chan. So I have been working on the Colorado Smelter Project under Sabrina for the last two and a half years. And as she just mentioned, I'll start taking a little bit more of a leading role with that.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thank you.
Is there, I sent the presentation to, um, Tracy, is that available? Oh.
You speak a little louder, please. Thank you.
Can you all hear me better? Perfect. Um, is this?
Um, we have, uh, uh, two new counselors, just a real quick brief of who you are and why you're here.
Perfect. So this introduction is really for the new council members. Nice to meet you. Thank you for having us on your schedule and for the new mayor, since we have been working in Pueblo for a while. Mayor, thank you so much for attending our community advisory group meeting. We know that the Superfund site is, we're, we're very familiar with it because we work in it every day. So we wanted to provide a brief overview of what the site is. So my role is to do communications and engagement on the site with the community. And then our project managers are more getting things moving on the ground. They're our technical experts. So those are kind of the two roles that you have here and I will go ahead and get into our presentation. The goal of this really is to make sure that you all know what we do and you can ask questions and clarify what we're working on and how we're moving forward. So we broke this, we did our introductions. We have two different units of the site. Um, and operable unit one is considered community properties. That includes residential and commercial areas. I'll show you a map on the next slide. And then operable unit two is where this smelter existed over a hundred years ago. So, let me see. Um, the blue area is operable unit one. So this is down on I twenty-five. You have Northern Avenue there at the bottom. Uh, Mesa Avenue kind of follows along that green line. So it's just directly south of us, um, off of I twenty-five, but a smelter existed over a hundred years ago. Through the process of creating lead and silver, there was metals that were kind of went up into the air, fell down and fell into the soils. There was also a byproduct from the smelting process called slag, which was left where the former smelter was. So those are the main, we're looking at a lot of heavy metals in that area. Um, so operable unit one is what members of city council have been hearing us talk about for a long time because that includes residential areas. And that's where we put our focus since people are living in areas with contamination. So we've been really focused on doing yard cleanups, sampling all of that. And as we're getting closer to the end of that, we've been starting to turn our focus to operable unit one, commercial properties and sampling in a former smelter. So this is really looking at operable unit one residential. Um, we have what's called an interim record of decision. This is just a legal document for us that defines what we can do and kind of gives us the authority to do that work. So this happened in twenty seventeen and gave us the authority to target the residential properties and prioritize those. So we've been sampling and cleaning those up. And we are getting really close to being done with them under our current cleanup level. That cleanup level may change as we'll get to here in a second. But we have been doing a lot of work there, um, and the residential properties include approximately two hundred and thirty inhabited properties. And we've been focusing on those ones, the worst first, where there are people living and where there could be contamination. So we're really focused on where people could be living and engaging and want to address that risk first. As you can see here in our completion numbers, we have finished ninety-six percent of soil sampling. So we need access from everyone to let us on their property to let us do this testing. So we can't force anyone to do that. That's not within our authority. So I'm pretty proud of this number because we can't make anyone do it, but we've got a lot of people to sign up. Dust sampling, we go inside the house, collect dust samples with a special vacuum and see what the concentrations of lead and arsenic are. This is still ongoing. We've gotten eighty-six percent of properties in the study area. Soil cleanup ninety-four percent finish and then dust cleanup is eighty percent finish. So we finalized the outline, kind of that, um, brown area that you see outside of the blue area. That is our study area, kind of defining the Superfund site. We were trying to understand how far contamination could have gone from the smokestack back when the smelter existed and understand where that boundary is appropriate. So we finalized that this year and we are working with the city and with the state health department to come up with some institutional controls, which are like legal or not, or different ways of ensuring that the cleanup that we do continues to protect people into the future. So we're expecting that will be a citywide ordinance that has some restrictions or different protocols for when people are excavating or digging a large amount of soil, just so that we understand and the state knows when that's happening to make sure people are doing it safely. So the last thing that Sabrina kind of started us off with, that I think most council members, I don't think Mayor Graham, you were in office yet. So you probably didn't see the email on January seventeenth, but you, uh, this is big news for EPA. Not sure if everyone is as excited about it as we are, but EPA headquarters released a new guidance that changes the screening level for lead in residential soil. It dropped the screening level down from four hundred parts per million to two hundred parts per million or one hundred parts per million, when there are multiple sources of lead in that area. We haven't, we're, so the long story short is that we're still figuring out how this guidance change for screening levels will affect the cleanup level because it's not setting a cleanup level for a community. That screening level feeds into a cleanup level eventually. So what we're, are looking at is how that screening level will affect the cleanup levels here in Pueblo. So we're continuing to evaluate that. We know folks are really eager for more information and for answers on that. Looking back at those completion numbers, we may have to reevaluate the cleanup side of things for sampling that, that, I'm not expecting that to be affected as much. It's possible that it will be, but if a cleanup level changes, that could affect how many properties will need a cleanup throughout the area. So we're very eager to get more answers and get that out to you and affected residents. Uh, we have time at the end for questions. Would you all prefer to ask questions on like residential or go through the whole presentation and then ask questions? Any preferences?
Let's go through it all.
Okay. So operable unit one, the, um, com- sorry, community properties also include some commercial properties back on this map. There are some commercial properties within that blue area. So as of last June, we started sampling areas where there's exposed soil. We're not going to puncture any areas that are covered by concrete or asphalt because that works as a protective barrier. But where there is exposed soil, we're going and we're testing for lead and arsenic to see what it comes at. Um, with what I was talking about earlier with the interim record of decision for residential properties, that's what set the cleanup level for commercial properties. We don't yet have a cleanup level. So we are expecting that in twenty twenty-six. I know that's a long time from now, but that's the timeline that we're looking at right now. That may shift, but we're still collecting samples, understanding what contamination exists in those commercial parcels. And then once we have more information, then we can look at proposing how we want to address. And then, once we have more information, then we can look at proposing how we want to address it. That'll go out for public comment. Then, once that gets finalized, then we can start working on cleanup. Um, and right now we've sampled approximately twenty-five percent of the commercial properties. And then, last but not least, looking at the former smelter area, um, up at the top, you see kind of a timeline looking at characterization. Um, so we're still really collecting data for operable unit two. We've collected a lot of the data that we want. We're looking at the soil, the slag down there, that's the byproduct. That's a lot like rock. It looks a lot like rock. It's very hard and it may have more metals in it. Um, there's a small creek down there. There's animals that live down there. So we're looking at where the contamination is, how it's moving, what it's affecting, to try to get a full picture of the former smelter area. Once we have all of that information, we're going to compile it into a report that we call the remedial investigation report. That's just where we put together all the information that we know, and then we move on to look at what cleanup alternatives or cleanup options work to address that contamination. So that's where we're moving. This year, we're looking at data consolidation and data gap filling to understand like, what do we know about the site? What other information do we need? So we're continuing to gather more information there. Still doing groundwater monitoring for the next two years. Um, one of the big considerations that I wanted to make you all aware of is land use for operable unit two. So I'm gonna pop back just for a second. So if you see where I twenty-five goes down, um, use my little pointer. This area here, um, near the railroad tracks, there, um, is some kind of mm, undeveloped area where there are like trees and there is an unhoused population that lives down there. So that is just a consideration when we're looking at future use. All of this area is privately owned. And so that's another consideration where we did look at, or as part of our process, as we move through cleanup options, we won't, before we set a cleanup option, we want to understand how the land will be used moving forward because you would potentially clean something up differently if it's going to be a park versus if it's going to be like paved in a parking lot. So we've been having discussions about that. We had a work session at the end of January. Um, and our kind of next steps there are to follow up and have some conversations with city planning and look at what the next steps are with the considerations that there are some unhoused folks living there and it is privately owned. So just conversations there, nothing conclusive at this time, but wanted to make you aware of that. We have also been working with the local health department to do some blood lead testing on the unhoused population down there. We recently did a clinic, I believe, also at the end of January and collected samples from, I think, thirteen folks who were living down there just to gather some informations that we, we know what the exposure is down there. Um, part of, they are living there illegally and so they're not considered residents in the same way that people who are living in houses are. That's just part of how that looks, but we are still aware that they're there and want to be cognizant of that as we move forward. Also part of the private ownership, um, there is some liability involved for the owners of parcels in operable unit two. So residential parcels are not liable under Superfund law unless they worsen conditions. There's a whole whole document I can point you to if you're interested. But property owners who own, um, industrial or commercial areas can be liable under Superfund. So one of the owners settled with EPA. We had conversations, we set an amount, and so they resolved their liability with us last October. Um, you can see here, we have some data on how many samples we've collected, where the sampling locations are. The other thing that I'd like to highlight is the proposed plan and public comment period. That's looking like two thousand and twenty-seven. I love timelines and I know that timelines can shift a lot, so I just want to give that caveat that this is our best guess right now based on what we know. So that is my presentation. I would love to hear questions and clarify what I can. Thank you.
Counselor Gomez.
Yeah, to be totally transparent, um, and not to sound too self-serving, but I, the only point of reference I have is I have a property over in what they call Bojangles, lovingly called Bojangles. And it's off of, of T-Zack and, uh, Santa Fe. And I'm curious because a lot of the water and stuff that drifts out towards Santa Fe is coming from the east. Okay, and what I don't understand, I have a property that's, the only reference points I have is next door to me. They were considered for soil cleanup. The property next door wasn't. How does that work?
This is an excellent question that I do get all the time. So I'm glad you asked it because it, it kind of, it defies logic in a way where we, that's part of why we want to sample as many properties as possible within the area because it does vary depending on the property. My understanding is like, part of it is the fact that it happened so long ago that the way that it distributed and fell down, contamination varies based on the different properties. So we have a really thorough method for going and looking at different decision units, collecting a variety of samples in each area. But what you're saying is something that we see throughout the study area where there's one house that has elevated concentrations of lead and arsenic. House next door is totally fine and then maybe three houses that need cleanup. So it really, it does vary as you move through the study area.
Just add to the profile of that piece of, those areas there. To the north, as you come down to Santa Fe and you go down behind those properties, drops into a creek.
Yeah.
And you have to be a mountain climber to get down there.
Yeah, it's really steep.
It's very steep. So, uh, has that been checked? I'm just curious how this works because I've got concerns that you have in one of your, that you're gonna go back and reevaluate. That might be a place they want to reevaluate.
So with the sloped properties, what we have been focusing on properties where people are living and engaging with the contamination, where that slope is, we're not, we're, it's not that we're not concerned about it, but we don't expect that people are there hanging out on that really sloped area as frequently. And so that's something that we're expecting to evaluate when we have that off, that record of decision for all of operable unit one. So that is something that we're going to be looking at, but it hasn't been thoroughly evaluated at this time.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
The, uh, the change that was made on January seventeenth, um, I, I'm assuming that you've done a lot of, of soil testing where, do you have documentation as to where the part per million level was? And can you indicate, uh, the, the percentage of what you see that would already meet this new guideline that was affected? Is it fifty percent? Is it a small amount? Uh, it seems to me that you would have that number.
Uh, that's also a great question. I know a lot's come up since that policy was dropped on the seventeenth of January. So part of, as Beth had mentioned, when we're sampling all of these houses and, you know, let's say house A needed a cleanup, house B did not, house C did. When this, when we do come up with a new cleanup goal, we will look at that house B that wasn't originally cleaned up. And if it is now needed, we'll go back and clean that house. So we have all of that data in a meta, in a meta database that like allows us to look back and see like initially, we're cleaning up things that are above three hundred and sixty parts per million. Let's say hypothetically it drops down to one hundred and fifty, that universe of houses between one fifty and three sixty. We have all of that logged and we'll start going back asking, asking for access, saying we now need to clean up your yard. And it'll be at no cost to the resident because that is what EPA Superfund does.
And a better way of asking the question is, if you go, if you, you go back to a place that you cleaned and you're at three hundred level, are you going to have to reclaim that house or, I mean, how, how do you, how do you get down to the level of one, two hundred parts between one hundred and two hundred parts?
Yeah, no, that's a fair question. So if your house needed a cleanup, when, after it was excavated and backfilled, the backfill material that we're using is well below any new cleanup goal that could potentially be for the-
Yeah, the, the cleanup itself gets you to the, to the new guideline level.
Yeah, so any house that's already been cleaned to this point won't need another cleanup because everything that we've done at this point is already so far below our new professional level.
I will add to clarify, just like the only caveat on that, is there are some properties where we've cleaned a small area, like a area where children might play or a garden area. If we've only cleaned that one area and we didn't do the whole yard, we might have to return to the whole yard. And based on your question, if I can clarify another thing, so the guidance that changed was for the screening level and that's not necessarily the cleanup level. So the screening level goes into this equation that our toxicologists help us out with and then comes out with a cleanup level. So we're not, or at least I'm not expecting the cleanup level to match the screening levels. The screening level is a hundred parts per million. And our current cleanup level is three hundred and fifty parts per million for lead. So we're expecting it to, I would expect it to drop, but not all the way down to a hundred, just to clarify that, if that's helpful.
And then, are you aware of any, uh, federal law that would obligate a community like City of Pueblo to remove, uh, the unhoused? Because it's, it's, uh, you dictate that it's dangerous for them to be camping in that area.
Not that I am aware of. I, we, we looked at this, uh, I think a couple of years ago at the site to see if there was anything within our jurisdiction or y'all's jurisdiction to, to address the unhoused population there, since it is a concern that, that we are aware there's contamination down there. We've worked with some of the local nonprofits who work with these communities to let them know and like try to advise people to not spend time in this contaminated area. But that's, we haven't seen anything else that's stronger than that, that we can-
And have you seen a report from the health department on the blood test that you did?
So there is a report, um, but it's not, it's not conclusive. Yes, there was only one sampling event and I believe they're planning another one in the future.
Cause I'm thinking, we may not have a, an obligation legally, but ethically, if it's dangerous down there, we should do something about it.
And I think that's what we've been working with the local, um, nonprofits to, to educate and help let them know what's under, what's going on. Uh, part of blood lead testing is it is something that you have to do over time to see like, is the exposure getting worse? Is there less? We can't really see. So there was one event that happened late January. There's another one happening in March. Um, the other caveat with testing the blood lead level is that when we're developing these cleanup goals, we're really targeting children. So your blood lead level is most important when you're from zero to seven years. So as an adult, it's a little bit of a different level that you have to refer to. Um, a- again, to answer the question, I don't know that of any authority that allows for it. It is private property. So I think we've tried reporting that there's like people living where they shouldn't be, but there's nothing that we've been able to like do ourselves and get them out of that area.
Thanks. And then lastly, who is serving, uh, from city council on the CAG, uh, board there? I served on there for a couple of years with another counselor named Ed Brown. Uh, do you know Mayor?
I don't believe we currently have a representative on the community advisory group. We would love to have one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I think we'll put that on the agenda to make sure we do have a representative. Thank you.
Um, yeah, maybe I'm looking at this as soil mitigation instead of just cleanup. But does that, could that entail adding soil, clean soil? Instead of, opposed to just cleaning it or removing it, how does that work?
So if a property, let, let me make sure I understand the question. So if a property qualifies for a soil cleanup, are you asking if we can add additional soil to the property?
Clean soil, clean fill, correct.
So if a property qualifies for cleanup, and again, this cleanup level may change, then what we do is we kind of come in, we scoop out the contaminated soil down to a certain depth, whatever it is, I think either eighteen or twenty-four inches down. Yeah. Um, then we'll replace it with clean backfill. But part of what we're trying to do under our authority is return it to as close as possible to the same condition that we found it in. We're not legally allowed to do improvements to properties and that's like the fine line that is challenging where we don't want to leave anyone in a worse condition. But we want to return it to the same as it was. Did that answer the question?
Yes, it does. But I have one more question. Um, in reference to, because I know the area very well, uh, the wildlife, there's a lot of deer going up and down that hill like it's nothing. Does that have any impact on them or no?
So that is, I think, going to be answered more in the operable unit two remedial investigation. We've been doing biota sampling there. Um, I'm not sure if it includes deer, but I will check. Cause I know they're doing like smaller mammals that are living in some of those, like, let me actually go back to my-
And while she does that, so there is-
So, um, just to, to clarify on your question about adding soil. So there are many different alternatives that we look at when we're looking at a possible cleanup ways. And right now, under our interim record of decision, soil removal and replacement is the method. And with this new lead guidance, we will come up with new cleanup level, but we might also add other alternatives. And what you're, what you're describing is a dilution sort of method where people sometimes do mix clean soils in, bring that overall concentration down to something that's more manageable. So that would be something that would become part of a, a, uh, a community discussion around cleanup alternatives with this new level. And so we're still figuring out what that technical process will look like, but it will involve public involvement if we're gonna be changing our current cleanup alternatives.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, this has nothing to do with, uh, District Four, Mr. Gomez's area, but it's similar. We're talking about, are you familiar with, uh, Mission Foods and where they're located? Are you familiar with the mound of dirt to the, to the west, which is encapsulated with asbestos that came from Rockwool Installation years ago? Are you familiar with that? Is that on your list? Cause it should be. It should be on your list and it's something that we need to address. Um, that's with the fire department, the police department training area is called Smelter. But Mission Foods is right there. They bought the property and it used to be Rockwool Installation. When I was growing up and in that area, now it's a mound of dirt that's encapsulated, that, that has encapsulated asbestos. And I know about that because it was in some of the schools that I was in as an administrator. And, and it's, it's very concerning to me and should be concerning to this community. And that's something that I would like to see addressed.
I, I can add just a little bit of history that in the mid nineties, that area was sampled and a cap was put over that. That area was also known as Pueblo Smelter. So it was another American Smelting and Refining Company location.
Right.
Then Rockwool in, took, took over in the, in that place. Um, we can, that's something that we can try to, to push forward for, you know, possible reevaluation. Um, I think in that area, we, with this new lead guidance, we don't have people currently living there. So that it may not rise to a prioritization level, but there's always the possibility of reevaluations or reopening sites that look like they need to be-
We have people working there and we do have people living there. Goat Hill Smelter. They're not, they're right there on Goat Hill. There's people living there. And, and again, um, obviously the fire department, the police department use that area for training now. But we, we got people making food there. You know, wha- what, what kind of example is that? So that's something that I really want to see addressed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Gomez.
I believe back in the day, wasn't that arsenic issue down there and they encapsulated in about ten feet or twenty feet of soil right by the highway? Isn't that correct? Yes.
So lead and arsenic likely, likely, but I think, you know, I think I'd like to take some questions back and do a little bit more-
Okay. Going way back now. Thank you.
Yeah, that's something that I'm, I'm very concerned about and I know the people in our community are as well. Thank you.
Counselor Ellen. Um, Counselor Martinez, are you still on?
Yeah, thanks for that presentation. Um, I, I, I'm wondering if you all can talk a little bit about the two thousand and twenty-seven feedback. Um, just a little bit more information there would be great.
Are you talking about the, um, feedback that we received on the, uh, the public comment period for operable?
Yeah, 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 yeah. There you go. Yep.
Wow, of course. So that is part of the Superfund process where we, as EPA, we gather information. We look at the options that are available to clean up a property, remediate it. And then we present a plan to the public called a proposed plan that says this is our favorite option that we've seen out of cleanup options, which want, like, give us feedback on that. And so that is what we're expecting to go out for public comment. We typically have a public meeting and have at least a thirty-day public comment period for people to weigh in on that cleanup option.
Great. Thanks for all your hard work.
Um, I wanted to ask, you know, there's always been the talk about, um, how are we going to track this? Which addresses done and so forth? Uh, and, you know, there was a lot of things thrown around. Have you guys come up with a method to track it? So that if somebody, um, didn't want to participate in it, when somebody's buying their property, they know that they didn't have that done.
Yes, that's a great question. And you're reminding me that I forgot to mention part of my presentation. Um, when we, when I was talking about institutional controls, I meant to mention this dashboard. So currently it's just for residential properties. But it has the potential to include commercial properties as well. It's called the Qlik Dashboard, Q-L-I-K. But it presents the statuses of each property so that you can look and see whether a property was sampled, whether it was cleaned up, if access was refused, what the status of it is. So that is a dashboard that we have developed. We're still, we just rolled it out last month and so we're still finalizing it a, a little bit. And that is going to be passed on to the State Health Department to continue tracking that. In addition to that, we're looking to work with, um, this, with you all at the city to have a formal record. I believe, um, we've put those on each individual property at some other sites, but I think more conversations are needed there. We want to have a notice on each property of environmental condition, potential environmental condition, those sorts of things. So that formal filing of things- So that formal filing of things on each property, I would imagine will happen after we know more about the cleanup levels than. Cause we were, we were getting so close to being done with cleanup and so we were right there in the process. Now I think that will get pushed a little bit, but the fact that we have this dashboard, I'm encouraged by. I know I've had some resident or um. Realtors call me and use the dashboard, look at it, get information and be able to pass that on to people for listing. So I'm hopeful that tool will be helpful.
Yes, I mean, it would even be as simple as a recorded certificate with the Pueblo County Clerk and Recorder's Office. That's where the title companies go for their information, for the title work. And that would be a suggested place to just record a certificate of completion. So um, that when they do transfer it, everybody knows the disclosures in place.
Thank you. Yeah, definitely. And it is something we've been working with even linking, uh, because it is a public facing dashboard. If you guys want the link, we can share that with y'all as well. We're working with PDPE and CDPE to also have that on their website so that if people do want to go and see it, they can click on it. Um, you'll be able to search an address. So if you're looking for a particular property, you can see, uh, was a cleanup required? Did they actually do the cleanup? Has it been sampled? Did they not give us access? Sometimes things like that, uh, you know, we have been here for a couple of years. We're going to be here for a couple more. Properties change over and you know, if for some reason someone buys a house and the prior owner didn't want us on their property and this person does, if we're still actively cleaning things up because of the new policy change and us. Needing to clean up more properties, it's a chance for them to look up and see, oh, this wasn't sampled. Let me see if EPA is still doing that and now we can go and sample that yard and get it cleaned up if needed.
Yeah, that's the question. And once you guys are gone, is your dashboard gone?
The dashboard will not be gone, but once we are gone, the funds will also be gone, right? So that's why we've had such a hard push of let us sample everything that we can while we're here, because once this is, once we've left, we can't come back because we have. Money that's given to us to give, but then once the project's closed out, we can't ask for more money. We do come back every five years to reevaluate and make sure that everything that we've done is protective, but it doesn't really allow for us to sample these extra homes that have now wanted to do it, which is why we ask. And um, I don't think Beth mentioned, like even next week, we'll be down here again, doing a door to door event, asking people to please let us come in and sample inside their home. So we've done a lot of efforts like that, just, and you know, obviously word of mouth is the best way to do it as well, because not everyone. Wants to let us in, but if the neighbor's like, hey, this is actually trustworthy and it's a good thing for you, then it's nice to have them.
Yeah, that a matter of public record too, this in addition to your dashboard would be helpful for those in transacting real estate in the future. Thank you.
I, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Dennis.
Uh, can you go back to the slide that had the bullet points? One, the, I think the second one from the bottom was about the unhoused, but there was another bullet point there I wanted you to clarify. That's not the one.
Was it the prior slide?
It could have been.
This one?
No.
This one?
That's.
Okay.
See. No, that's not it either.
Oh, I'm sorry. There were, there were three slides, so.
The, anyway, what caught my eye was a, the term cash out.
That's at the bottom here.
Is that?
Cash out settlement. That's the.
Executive cash out settlement with OU two property owner. What does that mean?
That's, that's the, the legal settlement where the property owner agreed to settle with EPA. They gave us and agreed to, we brought both of our attorneys to the table. They discussed and said, what amount of money would be fair for the work that EPA is going to do on the property? They agreed on the amount and then that resolved their liability at the property. Yeah. No, it's a very, it's, when we sent out the notice, it was a very legal, um, legal settlement, but. Yeah.
I, I'd like to have you please stay in touch with me as it relates to that. Uh, we're talking about the smelter, Goat Hill Smelter area. Again, there were, used to be a lot of houses there. They're not there anymore. Uh, that has nothing to do with what we're talking about, but my concerns relate to the asbestos. And the toxins, the toxins that are in that area as, as a result of Rockwool Insulation. And the fact that we now have a, a, uh, an employer down there, Mission Foods, uh, that's put, providing food for, for thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of people. Uh, and I have concerns. So I, I'd like to be, you know, I'd like for you to keep in touch with me and with the, with the folks and that are dealing with this for the city. And uh, I, I, I'd like to know that there's something going on that, that's gonna come back in terms of what you see.
Mm-hmm. That's definitely something we can do and part of uh, within like the super fun aspect of where we have authority. We have a site assessment group that we will kick this back to and have them reopen what's already been done there and see if we need to take more samples or what the next steps would be within that.
Okay.
All right. Is that everything? Um, thank you, ladies. We appreciate it. Thank you for the update. And then next we have um, Mr. Hayes from Public Works and he's going to talk about the Medal of Honor corridor.
Madam Chair, Members of Council, thank you for your time tonight. I wanted to bring an issue to council's attention that had been raised from a public concern that was brought to our, uh, the public works department, uh, several weeks back. And, and in, in exploring that issue, I guess we discovered also that there may be some other concerns that uh, uh, we, we might want to address in terms of living up to our uh, moniker as the home of euros. So. In specific, uh, the concern that was brought to me was a concern about uh, making sure that our younger population knows kind of the significance of. Uh, those roadways that are named for our Medal of Honor recipients. Uh, so currently we have four streets in the city named for uh, Carl Sitter. Uh, for Drew Dix, for Jerry Murphy and for um, uh, uh, Jerry Murphy, Crawford, Sitter and Dix, sorry. Um, and those four individuals, uh, the, the street names that are there right now, Drew Dix is a, is a fairly major parkway. That's uh, going to be a major thoroughfare from uh, I twenty-five at exit one O two and one O four, uh, going west towards Pueblo West. Um, we're going to talk about these in just a second, but um, there are a couple of streets that are going to be going away that currently exist, the two that are named for Crawford and Sitter. And so I wanted to bring these issues to your attention and present a uh, hopefully simple plan to try to address some of these and make sure that we're continuing to honor them appropriately. So first things first, uh, again, the concern was raised that maybe our younger population may not know who these people are, know why they're named, what the street names are, what they are. And uh, they had proposed uh, some pretty intricate signage initially to uh, place along the corridors. Uh, those particular signs were in color. They were, can be a little bit difficult and expensive to fabricate and maintain. Um, we proposed a counter to them and just a simple blue marker, a topper is what this is called, that might uh, be able to be placed on top of the street name signs. Where uh, these Medal of Honor recipients' street names are. Uh, essentially we're proposing that uh, this light blue uh, marker matches the color of the Medal of Honor ribbon. Uh, that shows the field of stars on the ribbon, uh, states of course Medal of Honor across the top and then designates the conflict in which the recipient received the award. This is a relatively inexpensive, but uh, appropriately honorific way to uh, honor these folks and, and make sure that uh, we're continuing to honor their sacrifice. Essentially, we're not proposing any changes to the street name signs themselves. Those to be manufactured or fabricated in accordance with city standards, but this is just a simple topper that we placed on top. So as I mentioned, there are currently uh, four streets named for Medal of Honor recipients. And I'll talk about this fifth one that's in our list here, but right now Jerry Murphy shown on this map here. Uh, extends basically from just north of Vision Hills Parkway down south all the way to Bonfort, just north of Highway fifty B. Drew Dix Parkway currently just east, uh, excuse me, west of I twenty-five. It's uh, right at the Loves Truck Stop right now. Um, soon there will be a, another truck stop on the other side of the road and at some point with development of the west, Drew Dix Parkway is intended to again, continue on to the west to be a. Uh, either a minor arterial or a principal collector roadway that will carry quite a bit of traffic into Pueblo, uh, toward Pueblo West. There is a street that is currently proposed as part of Pueblo County's uh, detention facility project and the Medal of Honor roadway project. Uh, there's a cross street there that they've proposed to be named Dockham Road. Uh, for anyone that does not know, uh, Private William Dockham is a Civil War Medal of Honor recipient who resided in Pueblo following the Civil War. Uh, so I personally was not aware of uh, that particular bit of history, but I understand that he's buried at Rose Lawn, if I'm not mistaken, but uh, died here in Pueblo in nineteen twenty-one, but they're gonna. Uh, name this street after him as part of their subdivision plat that's in process of being reviewed and approved. As I mentioned, Sitter and Crawford, um, the two streets that are currently designated in their names are located within the uh. Housing Authority's uh, new townhome development. Those two streets are going away as part of the reconstruction or revitalization of the townhome area. Uh, so most of the streets in there have been renamed for uh, uh, native uh, tribes that have populated our, our area. Uh, but uh, both Crawford and Sitter streets will be uh, going away as part of this. So in order to address that. Uh, I'd like to uh, pitch an idea that uh, we, we propose a couple of street names for renaming. One of them would be what is currently Vision Hills. Uh, Vision Hills Parkway is uh, just north of Walking Stick. It runs through uh, just north of University Park. It runs east, west. It's a fairly major um. Corridor as well. Uh, and then there's a street off on the right hand side of that screen that's in blue called Tobias T currently. That particular road we propose as being renamed as William Crawford Avenue. Uh, the developer who is uh, developing that particular uh, third hand, we've had conversations back and forth, but uh, understand that they are supportive of that renaming. That particular street is not constructed yet, but it is platted. Uh, Vision Hills is of course partially built, uh, but it's going to need some reconstruction. And so at the time that it's rebuilt, I'm proposing at that time, maybe we consider the renaming, but uh, we would. Uh, of course have to go through a renaming process, just like we would for any other platted right of ways, uh, as they are essentially already approved by city council on existing plats. So to start with the existing uh, corridors, we have Drew Dix and Jerry Murphy. Uh, we have about thirty different intersections, six of them signalized and twenty-four unsignalized. Uh, the marginal cost of installing this additional signage is, is pretty minimal. Uh, on the signalized intersections, you have mast arms and so the street signs are a little bit larger. So these markers would also be proportionally larger as well. Uh, so a little bit more material and the cost to uh, install and hang them with the additional hardware is a little bit more for those signalized intersections. For the unsignalized intersections, very similar to the size of sign you see over here, uh, we'd be uh, installing those toppers directly on top of existing street signs. And so approximately seventy-five dollars in material. The work we're proposing to do over a period of time where we can do Drew Dix, it's only about, uh, I think it was just a handful of signs, maybe three signs that needed to go up for the existing corridor. Jerry Murphy's is the big one. It is uh, obviously the longest corridor of the, of the bunch that we've got right now. And it would take uh, probably most of the, most of this summer, possibly into next year as well to, to complete. But as we are making these upgrades over time, uh, we're, we're trying to time this kind of work in with our existing inspection work and other things. We're not overwhelmed in the traffic maintenance department. But in-house, we'd be manufacturing these signs and uh, using our in-house crews to install as well. Uh, initially though, for the existing corridors, we're talking about an approximate cost of thirty-six hundred dollars in material. Uh, so it's a relatively small additional cost. It's not something I'd be asking for additional resources for, but with your direction or uh, concurrence, I'd like to uh, proceed with doing that. Uh, doing these improvements as part of our existing road sign maintenance budget. With respect to Dockham Road, William Crawford and Carl Sitter, those roadways would have to come in the future, uh, at some point, uh, when those roads are either built. Or when they are platted and constructed at that time, those are, that would be the appropriate time to have those signs constructed and made. So our next steps, uh, again, with council's concurrence here, uh, initiating sign upgrades on Drew Dix and Jerry Murphy. Uh, we'd be also uh, submitting an application to go through the planning and zoning process ultimately to be brought before council for renaming of Vision Hills into Tobias T. Again, minimal impacts with those two particular streets in terms of readdressing. There's no addresses on Vision Hills and Tobias T is not built yet. So this is the time to do it if we're gonna do it. Uh, install sign upgrades on William Crawford, Carl Sitter and Dockham Road, again, when those roads are uh, either renamed or are built or replatted. And then obviously with uh, any, any infrastructure we install, we need to continue to operate and maintain it in this particular case. Because we're manufacturing these signs in-house, this is something very simple that we can do without a, a lot of extra equipment or manpower. So just to close, this initiative represents an appropriate way for our city to continue to honor our local Medal of Honor, Medal of Honor recipients. And these proposed sign upgrades and road renaming efforts are in keeping with the city's designation as the home of heroes. So uh, with that, I leave this for your consideration and um, I appreciate your time tonight.
Um, any questions from council? Mr. Counselor Gomez.
Yeah, um, Mr. Hayes, just in, in reference to the signs, I'm kind of a, an art kind of crazy guy here, but your home, your Medal of Honor, the contrast between the blue and the white, you lose. The Drew Dixon sign is perfect, but I don't know if they can do in a cobalt blue behind it or a marine blue and let the white letters come out a little bit more. You have it in the, all the budget books that way, so you can see it, but you're, it just, it's just lost. That's just an opinion I have.
So this is, believe it or not, slightly darker than the actual ribbon color. The ribbon color is a, a very, very light colored blue. And with that, the white is extremely washed out. And so.
It is washed.
Uh, in this particular case, the white is made of reflective material, so it would show up at night, but uh, this is also not the regulatory blue sign, because it's not an MUTCD compliant or uh, it's not a regulatory sign, so it doesn't. We're trying not to make it like the other regulatory signs in some ways. But uh, to your, your point was, is well taken. That particular blue was the one that was kind of a, a, a good contrast between a grayish color and the lighter color that was just uh, too light for the white background.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Um, Counselor Flores.
I just have a observation. Uh, one is that uh, I like, I like this plan for two reasons. One. A Crawford and Sitter were basically just two very short streets. Uh, they could have been more than two or three blocks. I don't think most people even knew they existed. Because it was it within the complex of the Sangre de Cristo apartments. So I, I like giving them a lot more uh, notoriety, I guess. But secondly, it doesn't seem like you're going to affect any residential addresses either, which is always a big thing when you change a street name. So for those two reasons, I would support this wholeheartedly. So thank you.
And to your point, it's also, there's no commercial addresses would be affected either. So.
Uh, Counselor President Aliff.
Yeah, I like it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
It looks good.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm, I'm hoping that you're going to redo Vision Hills Parkway to match the new signage, you know, all nice and new. We can't have a Medal of Honor street.
That's as rough as that, right?
Rough as that, so.
So just as another point, we've been coordinating with the Center for American Values and the Medal of Honor Foundation. And uh, it's not official yet, but they're trying to see if we can schedule a, a public unveiling on Medal of Honor Day, which is March twenty-fifth. And so that's why I bring it to you at this, this time. Um, but uh, if we can do this with Drew Dix with us and potentially some of the family members of some of our local recipients. Uh, we're going to try to pull that together and if that comes together, we'll make sure everyone's aware of that ceremony. So thank you again for your time.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Hayes.
I just was going to say that uh, in, in knowing Jerry Murphy as I did, because he, he was in Santa Fe where I went to college, taught and coached for a few years. I, I think it's, it's a great thing that, that you're doing and, and, and very honorable for those individuals and what they did for this country. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Latino. Um, Counselor Martinez, did you have something to say?
I did. Thank you, Counselor Mastry. I'm a supportive if staff needs direction, so I'm a yes.
Thank you very much.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Hayes.
Thank you for your time.
And with that being said, um, we are ready to adjourn at six fifty-nine PM. Five minutes and then we'll start our regular meeting.
All right, Daisy Bethany. Ready? Right, Lady Bethany. Ready? Go.